I want to call to order the regular seven o'clock meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, April 7th, 2015. I'd ask Commissioner Bowles to please have the invocation.
Okay, bow with me, please. Our gracious heavenly Father, we praise your holy name, Lord. We thank you for what you've given us here, Lord. We thank you for the ability to go through the county's business, Lord. We pray that you would give us the wisdom of Solomon as we decide these issues, Lord. We pray that your Spirit would be with us continually, Lord, to guide us and direct our steps in Jesus' holy and precious name, amen.
Amen. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone here this evening. Before we launch into our formal agenda, I would like to mention that the second week of April is a special week to recognize our public safety telecommunicators that work for our emergency communication system. Those folks are on duty 24 hours a day. You don't know them, you don't see them. They're in a room that's windowless. They stare at screens all day and all night long, and they stand by to, you know, respond to your calls from citizens and businesses. Just to let you know, our telecommunicators processed over 300,000 incoming telephone calls in 2014. Ninety-six thousand or so were 911 calls, and of all the calls that they received, they dispatched some kind of service to almost 120,000 different incidents. So as you're sleeping tonight, know that somebody isn't sleeping. They are standing by to engage and dispatch whether it's EMS, or the Sheriff's Department, or the police departments, or the fire departments, the rescue squads. They're all standing by at the beck and call of that 911 telecommunicator. So we salute them for their service and thank them. And ask that if you see someone who works for our emergency services, particularly a telecommunicator, if you would give them a pat on the back and thank them for the service that they render to our county, day in and day out. Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one adjustment. I'd like to remove item A under closed session, and that was our economic development item.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjust the agenda as suggested by Mr. Smith?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda is thereby adjusted. There are no presentations of any special recognitions or awards this evening. Moving on to item six, appointments before the board. First item we have is a request from the SCAN Center, that's the Stop Child Abuse Now, to adopt a proclamation to declare April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I believe we have Ms. Amy Eisley here to represent SCAN. If you could just come up and if you would just announce and tell us a little bit about what the SCAN Center does.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm so short. But the SCAN Center, Stop Child Abuse Now, basically, we are about helping children and healing families. What we know is that many of the families that we serve, the parents so often are the children that grew up in abusive or neglectful situations, think it's kind of normal, and are just simply doing what mom and dad did. So we have a variety of programs to educate them and support them as they learn ways that are more appropriate, more nurturing for their children, so we can work at breaking that cycle of abuse and neglect.
I want to thank you on behalf of Iredell County for the volunteer hours that go into providing the services to break that cycle of violence and abuse and neglect. And we would entertain a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Make a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. I would, for the record, like to read this proclamation so that everyone can hear about the important issues involved. This is a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month in Iredell County, North Carolina, whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable asset, and whereas safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities are needed to foster healthy growth and development for all children, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of communities, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, the knowledge of parenting, and child development programs, and the concrete resources needed to cope with stress and to nurture their children to ensure that all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies are known to succeed where there are partnerships created by citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, health care providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and calls upon citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. Adopted this 7th day of April, 2015.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Eisley. The second item is a request from the North Carolina Department of Transportation to adopt a resolution in support of improvements by NC DOT, the intersection at Brawley School Road and McKendry Road. Mr. Smith, do you have any summary of that?
Mr. Allison, were you representing planning tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Allison.
Good evening.
And I'm sorry, William, but we also have a representative from NC DOT if he'd like to speak as well.
I'll just touch on the main topic here.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, on the map here, you can see the intersection, as stated, the request is from DOT regarding a resolution of support for a traffic light at the intersection of Brawley School Road and McKendry Road. The estimated cost of the project is $250,000. The funding will come from the North Carolina Small Construction Funds, which was established in 1985. There is no cost to the county. If you should happen to have any questions of me, I'll be glad to try and answer them.
We were briefed up on this matter at the pre-agenda meeting. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Allison or our Department of Transportation representative? If there be none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we would approve the resolution for improvements by North Carolina DOT to the intersection of Brawley School Road and McKendry Road, stating that there is no cost to the county.
Motion by Commissioner Bowles has been made. Any further discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item C on the appointments before the board is a request from the State for Regional Development to adopt a proclamation to declare April 14th, 2015, as Advanced Manufacturing Day. I believe Mr. Merrick is here. And Mr. Carney, and Ms. Johnson.
Yes, we work together as a group to put together Advanced Manufacturing Day. It's a great program. We're going to be hosting a number of events. Most prominently, on the 14th, we will be having somewhere between 150 and 200 students from Iredell Stateville Schools visiting Mitchell Community College to learn more about advanced manufacturing careers, the skill sets required for those careers, and how they can participate in the workforce of the future, which is of course something that's of tremendous importance to both my economic development organization and Robbie's as well. So we thank you for making this proclamation this evening.
Any further, Mr. Carney, or Ms. Johnson?
Summed it up beautifully.
Okay. Well, it's a timely moment that you highlight the importance of advanced manufacturing to our economy. This board has worked through a strategic planning process, and in terms of achieving balanced economic growth is really job number one for us and everyone in this community, to include the businesses and our schools. And so the development community and our schools are partnering to prepare our human capital, as well as the physical requirements, so that businesses will find Iredell County to be a compelling location to come to. So is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion that we adopt this proclamation. In doing so, I'd like to mention if any of you folks are ever afforded the opportunity to visit the lab recorded that they developed at Mitchell College for training in advanced manufacturing, it'd be well worth your time. It's very impressive what they've been able to do with the limited amount of money over there. Very impressive machinery at work over there.
I was going to add, I mean, I know it's a symbolic gesture, but the fact that Mitchell Community College sent one of their leaders here as part of this proclamation, I think goes to show that Iredell County is in our educational, in our educational systems, I say that plural, we're all in. We're all in for this, so I hope the development community hears that.
Well, I would like to read this proclamation for the benefit of our audience and the record. On the 7th of April, 2015, in the matter of proclamation declaring April 14th, 2015, as Advanced Manufacturing Day in Iredell County, North Carolina, whereas a group of public and private organizations have recognized April 14, 2015, as Advanced Manufacturing Day in Iredell County to highlight the importance of advanced manufacturing in our national and local economy, and to draw attention to the many rewarding, high-skilled, advanced manufacturing jobs. And whereas the United States is one of the world's largest manufacturing economies, producing 21% of global manufactured products, and $1.7 trillion of value each year, or about 12% of the U.S. gross domestic product. For every dollar spent in manufacturing, another dollar and 35 cents is added to the economy. And whereas manufacturing supports an estimated 17 million jobs in the United States, about 1 in 6 private sector jobs, nearly 12 million Americans, or close to 9% of the workforce, are employed directly in manufacturing. And whereas U.S. manufacturers are the most productive workers in the world, far surpassing the worker productivity of any other major manufacturing economy, leading to higher wages and living standards, and whereas U.S. manufacturers perform 2/3 of all private sector research and development in the nation, driving more innovation than any other sector, and taken alone, U.S. manufacturing would be the ninth-largest economy in the world. And whereas in North Carolina, manufacturers account for 19% of the gross state product, with annual exports exceeding $76 billion. In Iredell County, approximately 300 manufacturers with an annual payroll of $476 million employ more than 14,000 residents. And whereas a day of activities, including student tours and demonstrations led by Mitchell College Technology and Workforce Development, seeks to strengthen technical and academic understanding of young adults with an interest in manufacturing, engineering, and design courses of study. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Iredell County Board of Commissioners joins the countywide effort to proclaim April 14th, 2015, as Advanced Manufacturing Day in Iredell County to support and celebrate our local manufacturers and school programs that prepare our future workforce. Adopted this 7th day of April, 2015. Thank you all for all the hard work that you do, day in, day out, in the service of our community. We will now open a public hearing to consider a request by Southern Properties LLC to release extraterritorial jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville. Mr. Allison?
Mr. Chairman, the property in question is located on Promenade Drive off Brawley School Road, just past Rescue Lane, and is outlined in blue on your map and here on the screen. It's owned by Southern Properties LLC. It's 5 tenths of an acre out of a 1.44 acre tract. It's zoned community business and surrounded by other commercial uses. The tract currently has a wet detention pond located on it, which is in place to accommodate a car wash on the adjoining tract. The pond is required under the county's high-density option of the watershed guidelines. Attached is a letter from the town's planning department giving their endorsement of the request. The applicant does not need town services. The property lies within the town's comprehensive land development plan, identified as neighborhood residential, which allows light commercial as well as residential development, and designated as corridor commercial under the county's plan. From a planning perspective, this request meets the criteria for a release of jurisdiction. The proposed use is consistent with both the town's land use plan and the county's 2030 Horizon Plan. The planning staff recommends in favor of this request.
If you should have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them at this time. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Allison? This is a public hearing, and we do have one person here today, Michael Nelson. Is he present? Okay. If you could come up to the microphone and just state your name for our record and your address.
My name is Michael Nelson. Address is 121 Kelly Cove Court. That's irrelevant in this discussion. I own the adjacent property on Rescue Lane, so the property directly behind the proposed wet detention pond. I have a couple concerns about it. I don't know if the board has any experience with wet detention ponds, but I have some experience with that through my work. And a couple of things that are concerning me as a property owner, I guess the first part of that is, is there a plan in place for the proper process of taking care of this detention pond? Maybe I misunderstood Mr. Allison, but to my knowledge, there's not currently anything in place on that property. There's not a wet detention pond existing. This is more of a discussion of creating one. So we can discuss that. But anyway, so my concern is, is there a pollutant removal process for this pond? Is there an outlet? If so, where is it? Are there provisions for overflow? And I do know that on the city side of things, that beginning this year, businesses have become charged with a stormwater retention fee. So I'm concerned, as a property owner, am I going to be charged a stormwater retention fee at some point in time in the future to maintain this detention pond? My other major concern, from my experience with these ponds, there's one, the most visible one is near the Chick-fil-A restaurant in Mooresville, is that these ponds are very attractive to Canada geese. Canada geese, most people think they're migratory, but there are three different types, and there's one type that's not migratory. So at the detention pond in where I work, we have about a tenth of an acre pond, and there are typically about 10 geese that stay there year-round. And at the high point, we may have as many as 50 to 60 geese. So concerns with that is it's a big nuisance, it's something that we have to deal with every day. I'm concerned about dealing with it on my property. These geese are aggressive. If they're nesting and are on a nest with an egg, they will come after people as you approach them, so I'm concerned about that for my business and the surrounding businesses. I'm also concerned about the fact that they encroach a pretty good-sized area, you know, not just the wet detention pond, but the surrounding area. And the feces or the waste nuisance created by the geese are a big problem. From what I understand, one goose can produce a pound of waste per day. So again, there's some big concerns that I have about just the nuisance of the geese. And then again, is there going to be a proper process in place for maintaining this pond? I do have a drainage already on my property that basically is non-functional, it hasn't been maintained. So again, I got some new information here, listening to Mr. Allison, but you know, I was concerned about the fact that there doesn't seem to be a current need for any sort of extra retention or detention.
Mr. Allison, could you address those concerns that have been raised by Mr. Nelson? If I'm not mistaken, the pond already exists.
Yes, thank you. Let me see if I can address a couple of them. Number one, the pond is in place, and the pond actually was built in 2009. Now, with all approvals of wet detention ponds, there is a operation and maintenance plan that's established with it, and that would be through the town of Mooresville. The wet detention pond is designed to catch 85% of the suspended solids, so the objective there is that the water exiting it is cleaner. But the operation and maintenance plan would be through the town of Mooresville, and it is in existence. It may be nothing more than a dry hole most of the time, but under the circumstances, it's there and available to catch that water if necessary.
Just to his point there, I want to...
If you could get it close to the mic so we can catch.
Yeah, that's new information to me, and I know since I've owned the property since October, I believe, and there hasn't been any water there at any point in time that I'm aware of. The other understanding that I have, and correct me if I'm wrong, about wet detention ponds is that they have to remain full at all points. They have to remain full at all times. So I'm not sure where on the map this, you know, I've walked the land, I'm not sure on the map where this pond exists, but I haven't seen it, and I guess I need some education in terms of, you know, if that is a wet detention pond, why it would not need to be full at all times.
Can you pull up the aerial photo?
See if that is on, that shows the actual... I'm afraid that is all we have. There's not an aerial with this presentation.
I think you may have just blasted mine.
Okay. That's the intersection on the previous case. I'm sorry, there is not an aerial photo.
Well, we have it in our packet, and be happy to share that with you, so you can see the actual physical outlay of it. It clearly doesn't have any water in it, and so I assume it hasn't attracted any geese. But...
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Basically, what's before us this evening is we're just exchanging the responsibility of that pond. It doesn't change the functionality of the pond, or what the pond's designed to do, or anything of the detriments or the attributes of that pond. It's just basically who owns it, is what we're doing tonight. This is a release of jurisdiction. The pond was initially built and undertaken by the developer, and it was located in the county's jurisdiction, and the developer wants to proceed further with his development, and it needs to be under the town of Mooresville's control, and this is a request to get it under the town of Mooresville's jurisdiction.
Mr. Nelson, does that address the majority of your issues at least? Certainly some of the technical issues, you probably need to speak to the enforcement folks in the town of Mooresville.
The Mooresville's engineering office can assist him with the greater majority of those technical questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll speak briefly to the water runoff fee that Mr. Nelson spoke of. That's a recently passed ordinance, I understand, by the town of Mooresville, so if your property is within the city limits of Mooresville, once that ordinance took place, you will begin to be charged a water runoff fee. If it's not in the town limits, you won't, my understanding.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in light of the fact that this was somewhat of an oversight when this property was developed initially, whereby part of it remained under the county's jurisdiction and part of it not, and this is just merely an act, in my opinion, to clean up that previous oversight, I would make a motion that we grant this request.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? If there be none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Thank you, Mr. Allison. Moving on to, closes the public hearing for item A. We'll now open a public hearing for item B to consider an economic development incentive for Project Golden.
Mr.? Mr. Chairman, I'm going to handle this for Mr. Carney. This is a request for consideration of an economic development incentive ranging from $53,200 to $155,200 over a five-year period, based on an investment ranging from $3 million to $8 million within the county. This is one that has previously been approved by the commissioners after a public hearing, and this is a minor amendment.
Note that no one has signed up for this hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything that they'd like to share, to be heard? If there be none, I'll close the public hearing. And any further discussion? Any questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve an economic incentive ranging between $53,200 and $155,200 over a five-year period, based on the company's investment, ranging between $3 million and $8 million, in contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to administrative matters. Mr. Smith, if you could summarize those matters which were agreed upon to be on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item A is a request from the Finance Department for approval of Martin Starnes and Associates' audit contract for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015.
audit contract for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. Item B was a request from the Fire Marshal's Office to approve or for approval of corrections to the Troutman Fire Department, Barringer, and Falls Town Rural Fire Protection and Insurance District. Item D, a request from administration to adopt a resolution regarding joint law enforcement jurisdiction with the Lake Norman Marine Commission. Item E, a request from Tax Administration for approval of an inter-local agreement by and between Iredo County and the town of Mooresville regarding a special assessment district. And item F, request for approval of the March sixth and seventh, two thousand and fifteen minutes.
Any further discussion on those items? Is there a motion to adopt those items outlined on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item C, Mr. Smith?
The remaining item C is a request from the Planning Division on behalf of Richard Howard to consider calling for a public hearing in regard to a release of jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, the property in question is located off exit thirty-one on Langtree Road, just past Cortland Lane, and is outlined in blue on the map and then here on the screen. It's owned by Langtree Plantation South, LLC, which is Richard Howard. It's thirteen point three six acres and is surrounded by residential uses and Davidson College campus, Lake Campus. The land is vacant and is owned R.A. Attaches a letter from the town's planning department giving their endorsement of the request. The applicant does not need town services, as both private water and sewer are available at this site. Let's change that map. The property lies within the town's comprehensive land development plan, is low-density residential as well as low-density within the county's plan. An initial request to release the property came before the board back in November, but the request was pulled just prior to the public hearing. A neighborhood public meeting was held January twelfth with approximately sixty people in attendance. A summary of the meeting is included in your staff report. From a planning perspective, the request meets the criteria for a release of jurisdiction. The proposed use is consistent with both the town's land use plan and the county's twenty-thirty Horizon Plan. The staff recommends in favor of this request. If you have any questions at this time, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions or comments? Do you see Mr. Brad Howard here? Any questions for Mr. Howard? Thank you, Mr. Allison. Entertain a motion?
Motion to call for a public hearing in regard to the release of jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville.
Vice Chairman Norman has made a motion. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. There are no announcements of any vacancies for boards or commissions this evening. We do have, and no appointments to boards or commissions. Mr. Smith, we have a report from the administration concerning inmate reduction status.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Beth Dirks, deputy county manager, has been working with the three agencies that have been tasked with these efforts. That's been the sheriff's office, through the jail, appropriate placement options, and the district attorney's office. And this is Beth's first official full report to the board, so she's had to do quite a bit of legwork to make the numbers work, but we're feeling our way through this. So I'll turn it over to Beth.
Thank you. There are two pieces of paper that are circulating before you. One is a monthly report for the month of March, and the other, the longer sheet, is the running total. We started this program last month, the month of February, and if you recall, we didn't have a lot of information to report regarding our numbers, because that was kind of our beginning month, our ramping-up month. So this is the first month that we actually have data to report, and I'll run through it very quickly for you, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. If you look at the smaller sheet, the monthly sheet for the month of March, we have, as Mr. Smith said, three different programs. We have the new jail position, the APO, and then the new assistant district attorney position. The goals that were set for those different positions are listed on the sheet, and then the new inmates processed, those are just the inmates that were processed for the month of March. And then the number of days that were calculated are for the month of March. So, for example, if those cases were disposed of earlier than they were intended, for example, if they had original court date set for the thirtieth of March, and they were disposed of on the tenth, then we save ten days in jail, because it was taken care of twenty days earlier than their court date. For example, if they had a court date in April, then we only counted the days from March. So that's where you're getting the running total of days. Because these agencies work so closely together, I've added a column for non-duplicated inmates, because if you'll look, and your overlap is really coming from your jail position and your ADA position, because they work hand-in-hand. They're working very closely together. The ADA position, those are only cases that are handled by the new ADA that the county is funding. Those are not cases that are handled by any other assistant district attorney. This is just the one that the county is funding. So those numbers are strictly of that new position that the county is funding. There are some inmates that may have been represented by legal counsel that did not talk to the bailiff position. They went strictly to the ADA and worked out a plea. So those numbers are listed in the non-duplicated, the purple column on the smaller sheet. So that's where you'll see the discrepancy. There are also some positions under the jail, or some inmates under the jail position, where the jailer or the bailiff worked with those inmates, they expressed interest to plea, but a different ADA handled that. So that would not be included in the ADA numbers. So if you will look for the month of March, there were thirty-one inmates processed by the ADA position, six through the APO program, and thirty-three through the jail position. But if you look at the unduplicated numbers of inmates, thirty-three with the jail position, six for APO, and fourteen for the ADA. Again, the jail position and the ADA work hand-in-hand. The other sheet, the larger sheet, is just a running total. What we'll do is, as we get these numbers every month, we'll update these, and then I'll be able to give you kind of a running total as far as a graph, so you can see that, and we'll track these on a monthly basis. There are two things that I do want to note. One, if you'll look, the number of days for the month of February under the jail position, I have an asterisk beside those. Now that everybody has submitted information for the month of March, we need to go back and clean up those number of days, because that included days in subsequent months. So we need to go back and make sure those are just days for the month of February. So that number will change, and I'll give you a more accurate number when we can go back and dig through that data. I will also say that these numbers, everyone has met or exceeded the goal that was set. These numbers will level off at some point, because with the new program, you know, we had a lot to go through and a lot of inmates. So as we continue each month, you may not see these numbers all the time, because we went through the whole jail population this first time with the new program. The ones that we'll be working with will be the new ones that will be coming in. So I will say, you know, these numbers, you may not see these every month, it just depends on the jail population. So I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Do we have a breakdown of those inmates that were processed, and I assume they're entering pleas, of how many were felonies and how many were misdemeanances, and where they ultimately are serving time, if indeed they are serving time?
I do have that breakdown. I have that more detailed breakdown that I can certainly get to you.
And I know this went through the end of March, and our first meeting may range as early as the first of the month to the seventh of the month. Does that put an undue burden on crunching these numbers? Would it be easier for you to slip this report to our second meeting on a monthly basis?
That would be wonderful, because when the data comes in, I do have to go through and make sure we don't have redundancy and make sure that the days match up. There are some certain situations where the court date, it was disposed that court date, but that inmate may be waiting, still in our jail, waiting for extradition, so that adds jail days, and I'm trying to make sure I'm tracking those days accurately. So that would help me if I had a couple extra weeks to prepare this data, if that's okay to the board.
If there is general dissent. Any questions or comments?
Miss Dirks, I was wondering, we can speak in terms of days saved or days reduced and so forth. I think one of the goals was to figure out how much money we could save, so we could make a fair assessment of the success of this program. Have we been able to reduce the number of inmates that we currently have housed in Rowan County? In other words, the reduction in number of days in the Statesville downtown facility, does that result in our being able to pull any inmates back out of Rowan County?
I don't have the answer to that, but I do know that Mr. Conley's in the back, and I'm sure he would have the answer to that.
Still have ten in Rowan.
For the benefit of the other commissioners, I have been attending the justice committee meetings that started this process, and I have to tell you, there is a very positive and collaborative effort between all of the different agencies that are part of this sort of throughput process in the judicial system. Our law enforcement agencies, of course, are responsible for apprehending criminals and processing them into the system as an input variable. The throughput is based on how efficient we are in terms of moving people through the system. Nearly seventy percent, or roughly seventy percent, of our jail population is typically pre-trial, that have not bonded out for various reasons. So anything that we can do to streamline that process and get their cases adjudicated, reduces their time on the Iredo County taxpayers' dime, which I think is pretty close to seventy dollars a day, whether they're here or whether they're in Rowan County, which has been reduced Just so people understand, the court system has many, many different players, some of them who are elected officials in their own right. From, of course, on the input process, the sheriff is an elected official, the police chiefs work for the town of Mooresville and the city of Statesville. On the output process, we have the sheriff's department running the jail. And in the throughput process, we also have the sheriff's department running the jail. So the one constant factor in the whole process, from soup to nuts, is our sheriff's department to include providing bailiffs for our court system. But on the front end of this whole process is a magistrate who sets the bond, and the magistrate actually works through the clerk of court office. Then you have the clerk's office, an elected position, who administers the whole process in terms of creating the case files and ensuring that they are placed on dockets in the right place at the right time. Then you have the district attorney, another elected official, who determines which cases are brought up for disposition, and the time in which they're brought up for disposition, and what kind of disposition can be agreed upon, if there's a plea deal where charges are consolidated or pled straight up to. Then you have probation officers, who are an integral part of the process in terms of recommendations and being able to take folks convicted and not given active sentences and placed on a suspended sentence with probation. You also have the defense attorneys that are an integral part of the whole process, some of which are appointed, some of which are retained. You have the judges, the district court judges, who hear all misdemeanor cases, as well as some low-level felonies, H and I felonies. You also have superior court judges who typically rotate through, they're on the circuit, and they dispose of the felony cases. And so, in addition, we have an appropriate punishment options nonprofit organization who tries to determine if someone is eligible for some alternative other than incarceration, and also can be released on a supervised sort of pre-provation prior to actually having their cases heard. So, before, all of these different stakeholders in the throughput process have very specific, delineated functions by law, and have concentrated on executing those functions to the best of their ability. But it has been a siloed kind of operation, where everyone operated within their own purview and their own silo. And although there is interaction, it was, at best, haphazardly coordinated, and at worst, simply random. So the process that they have engaged in over the last several months has been to sit down together, everyone around the table, and figure out, you know, what are the issues that each entity has, what are the deliverables that they're trying to work to achieve, and be aware of how their goals may impact other actors in the system. And essentially, take these siloed operations and have a horizontal integration process. And the result is, you get a more efficient process, you know, we can talk about getting efficiencies out of government. In my view, you don't get efficiencies necessarily just by cutting budgets, that generally cuts services. What you have to get after is changing how we do business. And this is a good example of just one of many different opportunities that we have as a county to take a look at how we do business in a number of different realms of government in terms of services, to be able to integrate more closely these activities and take into account, you know, get more folks around the table, so that we can get more facts available, and people can understand the second and third order effects of actions that they take, as it may impact somebody else in the system. So this is on the front end of a process. I will tell you that they're on a shakedown cruise. You know, it's easy to talk about things in concept. When you actually get down to executing, you find out lots of opportunities for improvement. And so that's just going to be a process, an iterative process, for the next several months. And I appreciate, Beth, your hard work at being able to present in a very cogent and understandable way some of the objective goals that we have, which is basically to save the taxpayer some dollars, and to ultimately have the most efficient throughput process possible, so that we can adequately project into the future what our jail population is likely to be, and what kind of facilities that we are going to need. is likely to be and what kind of facilities that we are going to need in order to meet those requirements. So we all want to hit the sweet spot. We don't need to have anything too big. We don't need to have anything too small, as it is currently. And we have some short-term, midterm, and long-term kind of goals that we can establish. So thank you for the work that you're doing. And I will note that one of the issues that was raised this last week was while we have brought on authority to hire a part-time judge and a part-time ADA, the one piece in there that's sort of holding us back is within the clerk's office. And so I suggested to Mr. Mixon that he come to us and if he needs a part-time clerk to help support this effort, that, you know, if the numbers seem to be proving as they are going forward, that that's something we would certainly consider very closely. Any further comments?
I was just going to ask, I see our jail population numbers in the 250 to almost 290 range. What jail population would it trigger probably reducing the number of inmates that we would house outside the county?
If we get rid of another problem, we'd probably be okay and we'll probably put those guys back. We've got to hold consideration to bring those guys back. We need those beds later on these other counties when we sell those beds out. So that's something we have to do differently.
So the population would need to be consistently below 230?
If you have to remember 230, that usually counts if we can do stuff like that. Something else we need to open to the state is where it's our current policy situation at the jail. That's still going to span 230, I hope.
Right.
Yeah, I'm done. I'm sorry.
I think it would be beneficial that, I only give this thing time to work so you can have accurate numbers, but if we can translate days saved in the jail into dollars at some point, I mean, I think that's, in the short term, that's all what we're after, is to reduce the cost as much as anything. I still have an abiding concern, I want to share a few numbers with you that I've been doing some research lately and talking to some folks. We can talk about folks in all honesty of reducing the jail population by 20 folks or the number of jail days and so forth. Here's the numbers you need to be concerned about in the future. In March of 2015, superior court cases pending, we had 2,006. Now here's the number that blew me out of the water. In district court cases pending, March 2015, 13,388. Infractions and citations, I'm told that's seatbelt tickets, speeding violations, minor infractions, we had 3,570. And there were roughly, best estimate, I got 1,957 people on probation. I want to congratulate these folks for their work. They told us that they would get those numbers down and they have because in March of 2014, you had 2,445 superior court cases pending and you had 15,575 district court cases pending. And in fraction and citations, you had 4,324. The point that I'm trying to arrive at, and I think this where it becomes more succinct, if you take the $70 a day figure that was mentioned earlier and if only 1% of these district court cases that are pending results in jail time, you just knocked a $3.4 million hole in your budget. That's how the numbers work out. So that number in district court cases pending, that number worries me. Either, either all, a lot of those folks are innocent or they're not going to get active time. But again, if you multiply 1% of that, 134 folks, now I know some of those folks have more than one case, but if they're convicted on any one of them, only a very small percentage of those folks have to get jail time before you're in trouble. You add, you compound that by the fact that sentencing guidelines could be changed by the state. Inmate retention, and Major Conley's talked about this extensively in meetings we've had, how, you know, you got the dip and the dunk and you got, there was even talk at one time, if you got less than a two-year sentence, you were going to serve that time in the local jail rather than go to the Department of Corrections. Those only compound the problem. So I just want to say, I think we can knock a dent in with this, but the long-term solution in my mind still has to be at some point, you got to build a jail. There's just no way around that. And if those, I talked to Mr. Dirks by telephone today, one thing, having been here a while, when the state begins to talk about something and then they quit talking about it and they get real quiet, that usually means they're fixing to do something. So I'm really worried that they may change these sentencing guidelines and if they do, we're going to have a real problem. So I congratulate my fellow board members earlier by setting additional money aside for the jail, but I think your long-term solution is, remains jail construction because the numbers are just astounding. Thanks, sir.
Anything further? Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Dirks.
Thank you.
Very much. Any new business? County managers' report, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Got just a few things. I had to send an email out to the board, it was last week, posing the question about the potential change to our budget calendar and the way that we review the budget. Right now, in the budget calendar for this year, we have budget work sessions set up between 5:30 and 9:00. We have four of them scheduled with the board. They're May 7th, 12th, 14th, and 21st. That's a Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday, Thursday. And what I had proposed was that you consider potentially taking one day and blocking off between 1 o'clock and 5 o'clock to address as much as we can and hit as much of the budget as possible. We spend, historically, we've spent a lot of time on, I'll just call them general fund departments, that we make very, very few changes to. And I'd like to spend less time on those, give you any information that you need and certainly enough to make a well-thought-out, informed decision, but spend more time on the bigger ticket items such as public education. That's basically half of our budget and I'd like to dedicate a little more time to that. It has the biggest impact. So what I would like to propose and throw out, and just throw out a couple of dates to you, is that we take from 1 o'clock to 5:00 or we bring lunch in and then start at 1:00 on either, well, I would propose the 7th, May 7th, as our first date. And then I'm sure there will be action items and changes based on that first meeting. And then I would propose we meet again on the 14th. Now that would be probably a much shorter meeting unless we're just not able to hit what I'm hoping that we're able to hit in that initial meeting. And I wanted to throw that out for discussion and get your thoughts on that. I just, when we have up to, okay, well, we have, these are the dates we have already, you know, tentatively scheduled, the 7th, 12th, 14th, and 21st. We could probably do the 7th and the 12th. Would that one work for you?
As far as myself, I can meet 1:00 to 5:00 any day with a little bit advanced, but Tuesday is, that's survival day. If I make it through Tuesday, the rest of the week is downhill.
Okay.
That's the hardest day of the week for me.
Now, Commissioner Robertson mentioned-
Because I spend part of it with y'all, but.
That week of the 11th to the 15th is just not possible during the day.
Okay.
I'll do Tuesday.
The 15th, I should be okay with.
Okay, the 15th is a Friday.
Right.
And very likely, if this works, like I hope it'll work, which, you know, best laid plans, we will get most of this done because you all know that there's so much preparation that goes into a budget. We'll have most of the big issues covered unless you have questions for us. So that initial meeting on the 7th, we should be able to hit just about everything. I don't anticipate the second meeting being as long.
What time were you sent on the 7th?
1:00 to 5:00.
Okay.
What day of the week is the 7th?
That is a Thursday.
Do we want to try Wednesday, Thursday, and the 6th and the 7th?
We could, I don't know that we'd be able to turn, if there are major issues, I don't know that we'd be able to turn them around. Last four years, we have not had major issues. Biggest issue last year was coming up with a different calculation on the schools where there was a-
If we went the 6th and the 7th and then if there was a major issue, take care of that on the 14th or 15th. And Commissioner Robertson is freed up?
So that's a Wednesday and a Thursday, May 6th and 7th. We could plan for a 1:00 to 5:00 on the 6th and plan for a 1:00 to 5:00 on that next day with the hopes that we finish out earlier. And if there are major issues, come back on the 15th to return, you know, with any questions that you, or information that you need.
I just, if we can go to the 14th, that'd be better. Yeah, my Friday. Are you back by the 14th?
I'm sitting here adding the 5 and 6. You said you were on 5th and 6th?
Yeah, that's-
6th and 7th.
With the 14th on the wrong side.
6th and 7th.
In the event there's some kind of issue that-
Yeah, 14th is good.
14th is good.
Okay, 6th and 7th and then 14th as a backup.
Can you send us those?
Yeah, we'll send, we'll send this out. But in general, is the concept okay? It's tough for us, and I know it's not all about accommodating staff, but when, for those that have been through it, you stop and start each night and it's almost like, you know, you're restaging and re-engaging every night. I think if we just hit it-
At 10 o'clock at night, y'all get kind of silly in there.
Sure. Okay, we will send out, we will send out the 6th, 7th, and 14th for everyone.
Okay.
What about the 21st? Is that still on if needed or?
We can, we can include, we can keep it if needed. It's going to be a tough budget here if we need it then. But yeah, we will do that. We will do that.
Okay. Let's see what the legislature does.
Good point. The only other, I have a couple of handouts. You've gotten a lot of handouts tonight, but I have two for you for information. I'll let those get moving before I give you an explanation. If you remember, we did this first, the eight and a half by 11 sheet, we did this last year for the first time and I will admit, we did plagiarize some from the NCACC, but we took a good product and made it better, I think. This is basically an information piece about public school financing in the state of North Carolina. And then on the backside of it is public school funding in Iredell County. We have this on our website and I think it's pretty good information for you all to potentially reference when you're talking to the public. And I'll draw you to the backside, which is the series of line graphs, I'm sorry, the series of tables and a line graph on the bottom. The graph on the bottom shows a pretty, pretty good picture of what we have, what the county has done over the last six years in funding, funding public schools. So interesting piece of information. I thought you would benefit by having this. And thanks to our staff, Beth and Deb Allford, for putting this together. The second handout is a map. I think I might have forwarded this via email to you, but it's a map of the valuation comparison by township, basically what happened across the county through the recent reappraisal efforts. And you've got numbers for each section of the county, shows a very good picture, and that was from our mapping department. And that is all I have.
Mr. Chairman, you and Mr. Norman and Mr. Robertson, I were in attendance at the district meeting of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and I think they mentioned at least four times in that meeting where the percentage of lottery money now that was actually going to school capital is down to 17%. Imagine that Raleigh taking the money and not doing with it what they said they were going to do.
Regardless of party affiliation.
So when folks ask you, I thought the lottery money was going to fix it all, just say it remained in the blog.
Thank you for all the information and appreciate you working through a more efficient process of going through the budget so we can put that to bed a little earlier. We'll now go into a closed session. Is this for the property acquisition?
Yes.
Okay. So pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A, subsection 5, property acquisition, we will now be going into a closed session. We will recess.
We will recess.
The hardest thing my dad has to do is not talk to him. He says, "She can talk later, I'm gonna talk when I'm..." And we have to hear what she says.
We are back in session. There is no action necessary on the property acquisition matter. Is there any other business for the good of the order? Or a motion to adjourn?
A move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Johnson to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.